City Council is back in session, it's eight forty-two PM. Ms. Johnson, would you certify the form?
Counselor Rowland.
Present.
Ms. Lambert.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Due.
Ms. Williams. Counselor Clark.
Present.
For the record, Counselor Williams said she did have to leave after executive session. The motion on the floor, would counsel, who made the motion, rather withdraw it or would counsel like to vote it up or down? What's counsel's pleasure?
I think we have to carry it.
Okay. And the motion on the floor was to, Counselor Jones?
The motion on the floor was to bring Trilogy Engineering Services board.
All those in favor say aye? Opposed have the same right?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay. Motion was opposed, the chair will entertain another motion on item number eight, discussing possible action on the selection of engineering firm for assistance in the Hurricane Harvey disaster recovery program.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randall.
I move that we select LGA Engineering Firm for assistance in the Hurricane Harvey disaster recovery program based off the recommendation of our committee.
Second.
It's been moved and properly moved and seconded that counsel selects LGA Engineering Firm for assistance in the Hurricane Harvey disaster program as recommended by the committee. You've heard the motion, any unreadiness? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same right? Eyes have it. Item nine, discussion and possible action on Trilogy Engineering Firm, engineering performing thing or required scope of work on city hall repairs. What's counsel's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Rowland.
Do we know the cost or afford the scope of work?
No, no we do not.
Is it covered by FEMA?
Yeah, because it may come off like FEMA, we're gonna get reimbursed from FEMA for this.
I know FEMA is reimbursing the work. That's what FEMA's focus is on. So the scope of work?
What?
No. No, it is separate.
So we don't have a budget amount?
We don't, sir. No, because we haven't had someone, that's the purpose of looking, doing this to ascertain the damages that we have as a result of Hurricane Harvey and the floods and rains.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we get a scope of work that we can connect back to FEMA, you're saying in the cost of the scope of work, we're able to tie this into similar costs that was received in some of the other grants or is the answer, can we tie that cost back in?
I can't answer that, honestly.
May I?
Yes.
So, the professional services is one of the expenditures that we have in our disaster recovery.
Okay.
And so, part of that will be reimbursable. Part of it will be reimbursable. But the whole entire project amount, I'm sorry, the whole entire project amount would include whatever professional services we need.
And it's not to exceed somewhere around fifty-six hundred dollars in answer to your specific question about the cost of scope of work, I'm sorry. Fifty-six hundred.
So the rec max. So you're, so you have it on agenda, so your recommendation is that we do need a scope of work for the city hall repairs, that we can connect back to FEMA, we use money from professional services, not to exceed fifty-six hundred dollars. Now, we don't know how much it's gonna cost, but we should have a ballpark to make sure that we're.
That's the ceiling, fifty-six hundred.
Okay, and so?
If there's anything beyond that, it'll come back.
Come back to counsel.
Sure.
So just for clarification, my follow-up question, you know, just to make sure I'm not missing the vote. So the term required scope of work, that's speaking to them coming in and figuring out what needs to be done and then identifying what work needs to be done and then we come back and work on getting the repairs done?
Yes. FEMA requires this, they require it to be performed by an engineer. And initially, the, when we went through the damages and those sort of things, I believe in initial guest estimation, gave them what, seventy-five thousand on the building, on the building repairs and that sort of thing. So that, again, depending on what needs to be done, when someone actually gets in there, could, you know, go up or down a little bit.
So I'm just making sure, what we're going on tonight is having them come in and do an assessment of the building, figure out what work, what work needs to be done, what repairs need to be done.
Exactly, so that we can get that to FEMA and see about, seeing what can be reimbursed.
Can I just ask one question on this here? Because before, when we had some damage, we had a company come in and make the assessment. And so, when you say an engineer?
FEMA is requiring this, it's not an option. And it just depends on where the pot of money's coming from, what the requirements are, the one we voted right before this had different requirements. So we're working under their requirements. And they just sent an email, what about a week ago, Judge, asking have we gotten this done yet? So FEMA's waiting on us.
And it's under fifty thousand, so that's why you don't have to bid.
Okay, yes, here, let me. Counselor Rowland.
Two questions. The fifty-six hundred is the cap from the FEMA?
Scope, scope of work.
For the scope of work?
Yes.
I guess, as far as, I guess, can we hear from Trilogy Engineer?
Sure. Ms. Dunderwood?
I can try to clarify as best I can. All of these dollar amounts come with percentages, for instance, there's an administrative fee that cannot equal no more than nine percent of the total amount of public work, it's called a PW, that's what a dollar amount is assigned. The engineering and construction fee cannot exceed the rest of that. The engineering fee can only be fifteen percent max, the rest has to go to our construction. That's the way the dollar amounts are broken up. So there are limits set by FEMA by which engineering firm can't exceed. Typically, you get an engineering company to do this type of work because FEMA wants to see it the way they want it and their language on their forms how they want it. If somebody that just gives you a cost estimate can't give it to FEMA the way FEMA want it given to them. So that's typically the problem.
So that's why they require an engineer, because they know what's needed by FEMA.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we approve the selection of Trilogy Engineering Performing FEMA Required Scope of Work on City Hall repairs.
It's been properly moved and seconded that counsel approved the selection of Trilogy Engineering Performing FEMA Required Scope of Work on City Hall repairs. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Item ten, discussion and possible action on the approval of the City of Prairie two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen financial audit. Mr. Payne.
Mayor, city council, citizens, you have in front of you the financial audit, very clear. I need you to take note of two things. On page one, that's what, you have a clean audit. And the clean audit means that I found a number of two adjustments that needed to be made and the audit is clean and it's for everything that you bond and everything, so it's okay. In the back of your audit, loose, and I've been saying this since the time that many years, this is not audit, this concerns your internal controls and compliance. Basically, you need to work on your compliance issues and internal controls. You have a shortage of people, I've been saying this for a number of years, and you need a workaround, there is no way you can step away and do this, and it's gonna catch you. And I spoke with this in America about certain things, and I'm seeing you all go real aggressive after grant.
Thank you.
You go messing around and give a grant, this will require a single audit. And a single audit is nothing but compliance. And a single audit is two audits, it's a financial audit and a compliance audit. Pass the financial audit, it will get bomb on the compliance audit. You all need to make a workaround, but it's lack of people, especially in the treasury area, you know, you need some kind of workaround, even work with your financial accountant, you need to design a workaround, because you're gonna get caught. And I get it several months later, JJ gets it thirty days late after the fact before he does the audit.
But let's be clear though, he can only get it after the bank statements come out.
Right.
So based on, it's not thirty days late, if the bank statement takes a month to generate, that's what it takes for us to get it to Mr. Johnson.
Right, that's after the month closed.
Yes.
And then, you know, so, and it, and I need to be clear, I did not see anything, any misgivings, any mis, anything wrong with the money missing in, I didn't see any of that. That's why this is outside of the audit, it's a comment, this is what I see, you need to work on the controls. Design some kind of workaround, work with your accountant, if you can't get the people in, put some controls in place, watch out for it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Mr. Mayor.
One quick comment. On the statement regarding the two signatures are probably executed, however, the review for the signature may be in question, we signed the, what is that form, JJ? The voucher?
The first voucher.
Right. The purpose of signing the first voucher is to double check the invoices, and we catch that in-house, that's why what you're catching is clean, because we do catch, if there's a potential duplicate payment, one didn't know, that's caught, and we check those things on every single check, I personally check them.
Okay.
So I just wanna answer that question because it's not happening, so.
Right, and this time, like I said, this isn't, this is not part of the audit.
It's a recommendation.
Right, yes, and like I said, I could see things, you know, like when we came out here, I was looking for invoices that we, I actually heard that we couldn't find, but we eventually found them, so we found the files, but that told me, I said, okay, and I knew why, I've been out here, I knew, okay, I knew they had changeover, I said, I knew they were gonna have a hard time finding, they did. We came out here, we eventually found them, but the time it took, you know, so, just recommendations.
Yes, sir, you can take it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we, that we approve the City of Prairie two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen financial audits.
It's been properly moved and seconded, counsel approved the City of Prairie two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen financial audit. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye? Opposed have the same right, let the record show, here's your animus. Item eleven, discussion and possible action on an appointment to Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. I shared with counsel two applicants that had applied for our Economic Development Corporation Board. What's your pleasure?
Question.
Yes.
Are they, are they filling vacancies that were already vacant or are there new vacancies?
It was already two people short. With Ms. Herndon, good question, with Ms. Herndon's recommendation, we're still one person short, but it was already two.
Resignation.
What resignation, yes.
So there's still one vacant spot after the?
After these two added, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor. Counselor Rowland.
Who are you?
Hold on, hold on. No, yes you are, please.
I would.
Chief?
Yes, don't do that again, sir.
I would, I would, I would like some further information from our economic development for B because of the resignations and what has happened, so I'm asking this, we move to our next agenda.
I'm here.
I'm asking.
I can give you an answer.
Hold on, hold on. Doc?
Can you say anyone?
Until doc. Yes.
I move that this be brought to our next city council meeting once we've had time to communicate with the members on economic four B and get a recommendation of how many people are vacant, how many people, how many positions are vacant, and then come up with our recommendations for our next meeting.
I can give you better information.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that this item be tabled until additional information, until next meeting, until additional information from four B on the resignation.
Not to, to how many specific vacancies there are.
I just gave you that, counsel.
Again, we, the motion was that it be moved to the next meeting, that was the motion.
Hold on. The motion is to move the possible action on an appointment to Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors to next meeting. You've heard the motion, ready for the question?
Oh, ready, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Randall.
Can you specify the additional information that's needed, so?
Well, I would say a month ago, well, I mean, so we would have opportunity to make recommendations, I don't know if you knew or anyone else knew up here knew that there were vacancies. Now, what I will say is, a month ago.
Chief, Doc, no more from anyone.
A month, a month ago, we got recommendations from three different people who were not the subsequent two people that we're looking at. And all I'm saying is that we move this to the next agenda. Last month, you gave us recommendations of three different people. This meeting, we have recommendations of two other people who weren't the three people. And so I'm wanting us to be given how many vacancies there are and an additional meeting for us to be able to vet through and communicate to other citizens about turning in an application packet. That's all, so that we have a fair and clear process, that's it.
Okay, any other unreadiness?
Oh, for the question.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Eyes have it. For the record, Ms. Herndon was in the hospital for a few days and she resigned as a result. The two other individuals that Counselor Rowland refers to didn't finish the application, so we couldn't get it to you and put it on here. So it's just, that's simple. Item twelve, discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of thirty-foot dead end street signs for Johnson Street, Alonso Street, and Marie Antoinette Drive. Counselor Jones?
Greetings. Once again, many of you know that me and Councilman Wallace, with the help of JJ, have been putting together a street analysis plan. I had additional item as well to try to, with the engineer services that we have, to go ahead and help us with that assessment, but due to that not being on the agenda, I asked that, like we break it down to pieces, so being that we seen streets that is dark, you going into a dead end, I thought it'd be a great idea, like most streets, or like other cities do, to say at the end of the day, you are heading towards a dead end, being that it's dark, these signs are reflectors, but five dead end signs from safety sign, a lot of cities go through to get their signs, for five dead end signs, it costs about thirty-seven dollars each, so that's the reason.
So this will come from street maintenance?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Randall?
Thirty-seven dollars, right, thirty-seven dollars?
Yes, sir.
For each one?
For each one.
Thirty-seven for a street.
Okay. I move that we approve the thirty-inch dead end street signs for Johnson Street, Alonso Street, and Marie Antoinette Drive. Second.
Yes, sir, properly moved and seconded that the city purchase thirty-inch dead end street signs for Johnson Street, Alonso Street, and Marie Antoinette Drive. Heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor?
My, my.
Oh, unreadiness, okay.
Are these the, in your analysis, where you're going, you said, A, several pieces, so this is just for that section and then you'll go, you're gonna review the other sections? Yes, sir.
Any other unreadiness? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Item thirteen, discussion and possible action on the purchase of twenty-four by six-inch street signs for Fernwood Street, Azalea Street, Ezekiel Smith Street, Thomas Street, Magnolia Street, and John of Arc Street. Counselor Jones?
Again, once again, we was out doing the street analysis, and we seeing that several of our streets don't have street signs, or that matter of fact, the street sign has completely faded away, and for some streets, we had to go ask citizens, when we was doing our ride around, what's the name of this street, how long has it been since you guys had street signs and different things like that? And so, we found these six streets, and the price of the street sign would be about fifty-four dollars each. The total price will be six hundred and seventeen dollars for the street signs.
We'd have in the budget, didn't we?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor. Counselor Randall?
I move that we approve the purchase of the twenty-four by six-inch street signs for Fernwood Street, Azalea Street, Ezekiel Smith Street, Thomas Street, Magnolia Street, and John of Arc Street.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that city purchase the twenty-four by six-inch street signs for Fernwood, Azalea, Ezekiel Smith, Thomas, Magnolia, and John of Arc Streets. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
Any unreadiness? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Discussion and possible action on the search for the city secretary position. Counselor Wallace?
So when we talked about this a couple council meetings ago, if I'm not mistaken, and just verify, I remember we gave a date, which was at the beginning of March, was that for the treasurer or the secretary?
I'm not sure, I don't wanna misquote.
Yeah, 'cause we had a conversation about putting that, putting that RFQ back up for a city secretary, so we can get a permanent city secretary, so, Mr. Mayor, what is the update on that process?
The update is, we received several applications and are in the process of going through them.
Okay, are we gonna have it for the next city council meeting?
Hopefully.
When did, when did they close?
I don't recall, there were so many dates, I don't wanna misquote.
But you have, but do you know if it's open or not?
I don't think it's open, but again.
As of today, it is closed.
Okay, it's closed.
So I've been reviewing applications from, reservations, applications off of the board to mayor.
Okay, so we can talk about that by next city council.
My, I have a concern.
I do?
Sure. What's your concern, Counselor Rowland?
The city secretary position is one of the most official positions of this city. And I'm finding it hard that every meeting is like pulling teeth to get information so we're updated on the city secretary. And so I'm asking counsel, I would like for the mayor to make it a priority on his to-do list to execute his duties to get us a recommendation for the city secretary as expediently as possible.
No problem. Anything else on item fourteen?
So my, my question is, Counselor Wallace, would you like for this to be moved to next meeting, or what would be the end result of what you like for this?
Yeah, I think by next meeting, do I need, I mean, by that time, you know, we should have the applications, we should be able to review the resumes and whatnot, at that point in time, we should be able to get a recommendation, hopefully. So I'd rather us put on there, for next meeting, to have it there, just in case that we do have it, and not put it there, not be able to have a conversation at all, so, I move, well, should I change the language of this? So if we're ready for a rec, counsel, should I change the recommend, or the language of this, so if we're ready for the recommendation, we can get the recommendation?
Sure.
Okay, let me see. So, can I, I'm gonna use some of the language from agenda item number eight. So I move that, that we table, agenda item fourteen to the next city council meeting and amend it to say discuss, discussion and possible action on the selection of the city secretary position.
It's been properly moved and seconded that item fourteen be tabled and placed on the next agenda to include the discussion and possible action on the selection of the city secretary's position. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Unreadiness.
Unreadiness?
I would like to make amendment that we add the city engineer as well as city treasurer.
That should be.
You can, you can do that under new business, it says request by mayor, council members at islands be placed on a future council agenda, so you can do that.
Cool. What call? The question?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same right? Eyes have it. Fifteen, discussion on community engagement board proposal, Counselor Wallace?
So y'all, y'all still got in your packet a hard copy of the community engagement board proposal. The idea came off of when the community development, grad students came, and they were giving suggestions of ways we can engage the city more, and they put a community engagement task force, I just turned it to a community engagement board so it can follow the, follow the charter. My goal is to have at least, at least one or two community, community meetings, so people in the community can have input as well, I just wanted to keep y'all updated on the process of it, and now that y'all got the proposal, if y'all have any questions about it, if y'all have any questions about it, just let me know. Mr. Mayor, I want to, I'm gonna talk to you about it probably tomorrow, but I'm gonna see if I can have a community meeting for next week, and if it, if we are able to put it on the logo call, I'll talk to you about that later on this week.
No problem, we can deal with that now, just go ahead and check the calendar, and you can get with either Ms. Cortez or Judge Alexander and get the logo call done.
Okay, great.
It's a city thing. Now, has this been discussion on, now this is a discussion.
Yeah, so I can't deny.
So has there been some action taken? Because I know I, in case I went here, what's the status of this, is it a city proposal, is it a city project?
Yeah, so under the city charter, council can establish boards, commissions, this will be a community engagement board, where we'll have a multitude assistance of.
Yeah, I read it, I got that part.
This is similar to the, to the board that we put on, that we voted and approved back in like November, December, so, we've already approved a citizen, a citizen board.
Yeah, a citizen advisory board, this is putting words and terms into it.
Okay, so that's the same thing? I mean, I was trying to follow what you're saying.
Yeah, 'cause a citizen advisory board is like an umbrella term, or a multitude of different things, so we made a motion saying that we want citizen advisory board, and so this is an actual specific proposal for a community engagement board.
So is it two boards or one?
It's one.
Is it this one?
It's just a name, he gave it a name.
Okay.
It's the same board.
Okay, okay, got you, just trying to follow. So this is just discussion, no?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. All right, new business. Counselor?
I move that we put department reports back on the agenda. Us not having department reports allows us not to be able to communicate things that are changing to the citizens in this community, but also gives us the opportunity to get, receive information. And so we had, we adopted our official agenda, so I don't know why it was changing again since we've been doing it, but I would like to see that back on the report, on the agenda.
We can check, I think it was something on the, we'll double check, make sure, but I think it was something in your ordinance, and the ordinance doesn't list that as one of the things. You have an ordinance that specifies what goes on your agenda, so we'll double check and make sure.
And if not, can you bring back to us a current ordinance with that on there?
Yes, sir.
Because that needs to be on there. And the second thing is, Mr. Mayor, I don't know, Mr. Payne has left, we have had, can you bring us, can you bring to us, we passed our audit, but there were some internal reviews in the memo, could you give us some information of how we're gonna correct that? I know we, this is not the first year we get, not.
I, I know we, this is not the first year we get gotten this, and we're just continuing to make sure that we have a plan, we're all held accountable. And so, if you could, uh, bring us, at the next city council meeting, kind of, you, you talked about some of your responses to him, you were saying it to him, but if we can get some of those responses into some of the things he talked about, that would help us. And then, um, that's the second thing. Is that, was that clear? And then the third, oh, well, you didn't have to be here, but the question was just asking the mayor to give us the responses to your internal memo. And then the third thing is that we are trying to get, uh, discussion and possible action on the search for, uh, the city treasurer position for the City of Prairie.
Engineer.
And, and, well, I wanted, can we separate them?
Yes.
Um, so, but yeah, that was coming up. Um, city treasurer position, and then a, a agenda item for discussion of possible action on the search for city engineer.
Any motion?
Uh, those are motion.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that, and council, I'm gonna let you.
Okay, that way, one, um, one, uh, either put departments back on the agenda or update our ordinance to include department reports on the agenda, on the agenda. Number two, have the mayor, uh, give us, uh, a response to the internal, uh, internal review memo by CPA Ernst and Payne. Number three was.
Engineer.
The discussion and possible action on the search for the city treasurer position. Number four was discussion and possible action on the search for the city engineers position.
Um, yeah, yeah, after you change that language to discussion and possible action on the selection, if we, if we, if we will have it by then, so that.
I don't even think we there, but yes, I don't, I don't mind with selection. Yes, I, I don't mind at all.
Okay, you've heard the motion, ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Councilman Jones?
I move that we put on an agenda to discuss with Bureau Veritas, the direction, the direction in which we would like our building official, uh, to, like, projects for him or her to look into, and just get a press to find out how a building official being on board would benefit the city and the direction, because we have several projects that are coming afloat, um, to just make sure that, uh, our eyes are dotted and teeth are crossed.
And so, we got Bureau Veritas, we wanna make sure we let them know, so they have plenty of notice, Mr. Johnson, Johnson, Peter Martin.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we put Bureau Veritas on to update us on our building official process. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I move that we put on, as an agenda item for the next city council meeting, discussion on strategic plan for the City of Prairie.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we put on agenda.